Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 17, 2017, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
President.
Devine?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Garpetian?
Mayor Protem Najarian?
Here. Councilmember Sinanian, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our nation. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation, which will be delivered by Senior Chaplain Al Garcelazo from Adventist Health Glendale.
I invite you to bow your heads with me. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting and pray as always that you will continue to bless our mayor, our city council members, our city workers, as well as the residents of Glendale. Help us, Lord, to be patient with one another and to treat each other with dignity and respect. And may those of us in leadership positions always strive to be good role models, especially for our young people, because that's what they need to see in this day and age. Now bless this meeting and grant us your peace, for we ask all this in your name. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 17, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, October 13, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Presentation on appointments. 3A is Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 24, 2017.
Thank you. Ms. Beers, Mr. Tectalian?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the city council. Next week in the afternoon, we'll start off with the Gondola Housing Authority meeting, where we'll just have the approval of minutes from the October 17 meeting, followed by a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Economic Development Corporation, where we'll talk about the Montrose Vision 2020 update. In the evening for city council, there's only one item under consent regarding design and engineering services for renovations at fire stations 26, 28, and 29. Under 7A, adoption of ordinances is an ordinance amending sections of the municipal code related to density bonus incentives. Moving on to action items, at 8A is a report from Director of Public Works regarding Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project, followed by another report from Public Works regarding parts and repair services for city-owned street sweepers, invactor sewer, and storm drain cleaning vehicles. At 8C is Director of Community Development regarding professional services agreement change order related to the 1718 budget and building and safety budget. At 8D is the General Manager of Water and Power regarding proposed 21-year Western System Power Pool power purchase agreement with Skyler Resources. Under hearings, there is a Glendale registered nomination for a property located at 3193 Vista Del Mar Drive, and there's another item under 9B. It's another Glendale registered nomination for 1242 Bruce Avenue. That concludes next week's report.
Do we have a full council next week, or are we still short? We're still short. Thank you, Mr. Tectalian. Next item, please.
3B is the State of the State presentation by State Senator Anthony Portantino.
We are honored this evening to have in our council chambers our very favorite state senator representing Glendale, which is the best city in his district, State Senator Anthony Portantino. Yes. Yay. Welcome.
First of all, it is an honor to be here, and thank you for accommodating me and letting me come talk a little bit about what's going on with the state of California and how much of it relates to Glendale. The first time I spoke at this podium was many, many years ago, when I was on the La Cuenyata City Council, and we were talking about Oakmont 5. So it's an honor to be back as a representative of this wonderful community, which is the largest city by population in the 25th Senate District. So thank you. There were a number of legislative proposals that worked through the legislature this year of particular interest. Couple things that I thought you would want to hear about, obviously SB 3, which is going to be on the ballot, which is an affordable housing, $4 billion available. In particular, there's significant resources for veterans' housing. One of the unfortunate things that happens in our country, we send brave men and women off to war, and then we have to remember them, and they come back and try to help them as much as we can. And SB 3 has significant resources for multifamily housing and veterans' housing. So please look at that and see what allotment, I don't know if you guys have started to make a breakdown of how some of these initiatives are going to affect the city of Glendale, but that's one to watch. Obviously, SB 5, which is the Parks Bond, which includes the $20 million for the Glendale Narrows Project, that's going to be on the June 2018 ballot, and it's very important that that passes. Senator DeLeon was the primary author, and I was proud to be one of the two principal co-authors with 31 other authors. And obviously, Assembly Member Friedman was also central to the passage of SB 5, and the governor signed it, I think, on the last day. Why he waited to the last weekend to sign it. But in particular, there's $1.2 billion in that for parks, $550 million for flood control, $1 billion for water, and a number of climate and other important pieces to SB 5. I know the city of Glendale has joined the coalition to oppose the 710 freeway, and our good friend Ara was central to the fight to oppose the freeway, excuse me, the tunnel at MTA. And I don't know, you've reported, obviously, that the MTA voted to prefer an alternative different than the tunnel, and your leadership on that for the last five years was central to that fight. And having Glendale join the coalition was very important to that. In addition to that, the governor signed a bill to freeze the rents of the tenants of the Caltrans houses who are in the Affordable Housing Program. I would have liked to have freeze the rents for all 400 tenants, but the governor's office came back and said, you know what, let's focus on those who are in the Affordable Rent Program, which is about 125 of the houses. And so he signed a bill, I actually saw him yesterday, and the first thing out of his mouth was, I signed that housing freeze bill, and he was very much up to speed. So that's going to help those homeowners buy those homes. And obviously, what we want to do is get all of those Caltrans properties into private ownership and get them off the state real estate list, and finally put a fork in the 710 tunnel. There were a number of other important bills on financial disclosure. AB 249 was signed by the governor. I chair the Education Committee on Higher Education, the Budget Subcommittee on Education. And in particular, community colleges did very well this year. Though we don't spend enough on our students, it was the highest per pupil spending in California history, over $11,000 per pupil was included in this year's budget. If you remember, the governor's original proposal wanted to defer $1.9 billion of education funding to 2019, and we fought hard and brought about $900 million of that into this fiscal year, which was very important. We raised CalGrants for needy California students by $2,000. Senator DeLeon and I had a bill to do that, which then we incorporated into the budget. And just so you know, California spent $74.5 billion on education this year. It's still not putting us at the top where we were in the 1970s, but it's a step in the right direction. Community colleges got an additional $25 million for the completion grant program. We put $5 million into veterans' resources. Another thing that we did in the budget was a veterans' tuition exemption, where California law was inconsistent with federal law, and we were about to lose $65 million for veterans' college affordability. And so we fixed that in the budget and met the federal deadline to free up resources for our brave men and women who fight and should have an opportunity to come back and get an education. My father was the first in my family to go to college on the GI Bill of Rights after World War II. The model worked for the '50s, '60s, '70s, and '80s. It should work for the 21st century, as we're moving into 2020. Cap and Trade was also passed. There was $1.5 billion that unfortunately, in my opinion, didn't go to transit, but we have a verbal commitment from the leadership that when the new allotments of Cap and Trade dollars come back in January, a significant portion of that is going to go to transit, which is important. Let's get people out of their cars. SB 1 passed, and Glendale and just one pot of the money from SB 1 is going to get about $4 million from the highway users' tax projection for Glendale. And I'm sure you guys, have you been monitoring the SB 1 breakdown and how different pots of money, and I know MTA is going to share, and the COG, and also the Arroyo Verdugo are going to get significant pieces of that. So obviously, make sure that you work closely. I was at a meeting at La Cuenyata where they had two people from MTA sort of walking them through what their allotments are going to be. So you should definitely be on top of that, both the direct monies from SB 1, but also what's going to be through the regional amounts of money. And California's infrastructure needed it. One of the reasons why I felt comfortable voting on it was that there was a constitutional amendment to constitutionally protect the money. So as you know, in years past, the legislature has diverted money from transportation, but there will be a constitutional protection on the ballot to make sure that this money has to go for the intended purposes, and I think that's important. It's a large increase to gas tax, and the taxpayer should have the confidence to know that the money's going to go for the intended purposes. There were a couple bills, unfortunately, that passed that I did not support, and I know Glendale opposed the wireless telecommunications. SB 649 did pass to preempt local control on some of the wireless telecommunications placements. I opposed it and voted against it, and I think that was unfortunate that that got through. SB 35 was another. Of all the housing bills, there were 15 housing bills. I supported 14 of them, I believe. The one that I felt went a little bit too far, again, preempting local control, was SB 35. And I'm sure you guys are doing an analysis of that and how it's going to affect some of your land use decisions. Early on, I went to the author and said I just couldn't support it, and unfortunately, it did go through intact. But the other pots of money were important, to make available for affordable housing and other housing projects. As you know, when I was in the Assembly, I opposed the redevelopment takeaway and got a lot of flak for that, for lack of a better expression. And I said at the time, you can't do away with the only funding we have for housing and the only economic development plan at the time without having a replacement. And here we are 10 years later. It took 10 years to actually get some economic development and some pots of money available back then. Couple other bills, or one other bill for you to sort of watch is AB 186, which would place safe drug harbor houses in communities. It did not pass the Senate. I opposed it. It's a theory that has merit in trying to stem the spread of HIV and other diseases through needle programs. I just didn't feel comfortable that this had enough safeguards for residential communities. There was a potential that these facilities could end up in residential facilities versus hospital facilities, and so I voted against that in the state senate. But you should be monitoring AB 186, because it's probably going to come back in January. And again, in our district, I just don't think it was appropriate to do that. So keep an eye on that. Another thing I should mention, I know Burbank and other communities have struggled with the six-bed residential facilities that have pretty much total preemption of any local, even inspections and other things. So a number of folks have reached out to my office, and we are currently brainstorming with Burbank and also the city attorney of La Cuenyata. So I make the offer to Glendale, if Mr. Garcia wants to talk to Mr. Starris and my office, we're trying to figure out if there are some prudent local issues that can help make those facilities better, but also provide a monicum of local control, because right now there's total preemption. I support the concept, but I think there is a role for local governments to play, and we're trying to find that sweet spot. So I make the offer to have you guys be part of that. I was proud to chair the Education Budget Subcommittee. As you know, GCC is the heart and soul of upward mobility for our community, and PCC, my district, has GCC, PCC, Citrus, and is served by three other community colleges. And so it's a very important issue. The governor signed a bill to make community college free for the first year this year, which is also, I think, very important. I have the legislative analysts working on an evaluation of all the education models around the country and around the world to see how we can change our K-12 system to meet a 21st-century economy. Our education model was created when we were manufacturing in a farming economy. We're no longer that economy. We should change the model, as far as I'm concerned, to give more opportunities for our students, not just keep the old model intact, where there are two silos, higher education and K-12. They should be blended, and it should be seamless transition into higher education for every Californian student. With that, I'll take some questions, and actually, I have one more quick announcement that I'm going to get in trouble if I don't make. I was requested to talk about the 8th Annual Glendale Health Festival, which is coming up on November 4, and I know the city's involved, and a number of folks are involved with that. And I don't want to get in trouble for not saying that.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Sinanian?
Thank you, Mr. Senator, for visiting us and giving this State of the District report. It's very important for us to know, to have our finger on the pulse of legislative developments in Sacramento. And thank you for being such a staunch champion of your district in general, but Glendale in particular. I do want to call to your attention the six-bed residential care facility issue is circulating in Glendale as well. We've been getting the first complaints about these establishments sort of popping up in residential neighborhoods, and the complete absence of authority on our part to do anything about it is troublesome. So...
Yeah, we're looking at, I mean, obviously, transportation, parking, hazardous waste disposal. I mean, there are legitimate issues that need to be addressed, the right to inspect, for the local health department to come in. Right now, I believe only Fire Department is the only pre-permitted inspection allowed. And I support the concept. I think we need treatment facilities, but they need to make sense, and they need to have oversight. And right now, the way it was written, there's no oversight.
And it may wreak havoc on our zoning issues, too.
Right. So yeah, again, I make the offer to the city and Mike, if you want to reach out. We're trying to, we're putting our best thinking caps on. I know Burbank did a lot of analysis on this issue, and there's been several lawsuits. And so I'm open for suggestion. I mean, my offer is to see if we can all collectively come up with something. I know the League of Cities has tried, but I don't think there's really been a hardcore, reasonable approach. There's been draconian measures that have gone too far, but I don't think there's been sort of a sound, reasonable way. Mike, I don't know if you wanted to jump, you pressed your button.
I was just going to say, if you want, Councilmember Sinanian, Mr. Mayor, Protem, I can certainly reach out to Burbank and also the La Cuenyata City Attorney, get some basic information, and I can report back to you via memo, and the council can decide whether to direct us to move forward.
That'd be great. Thank you. And finally, SB 35, is that final?
Signed into law.
And there's no recourse?
Nope. It's law.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. So those are all my comments.
Mr. Agajanian?
I would like to thank the Senator while me and Paula Devine, the council member, we were in Sacramento. He was kind enough to direct us to the Senate chamber. That was first for myself, of course. I reported many times, but I never was there personally. And while Senate was in session, we were there, and he was there with us. We took pictures. Thank you, Senator, for letting us to the chamber, because it's not that easy. You can't go to the balcony and watch the session from there, but we had the chance to go and meet him and other senators while it was in session. That's important, of course. The other thing I want to ask, if you want to say something about the water fix, the tunnels, if you want to say something, if you don't, then that's fine with me.
Well, I think there's still work to be done. I mean, obviously, locally, there was a vote to fund a significant portion of it. It's something the governor wants, and I would say, in my observation over the past seven years, the governor typically gets what he wants. And I think there's a little bit more compromise to be worked out. I mean, obviously, the goal is to preserve the delta, but also create a stable water supply for Southern California. And so, like everybody else, I'm a cheerleader that they accomplish both of those goals, protect the ecosystem, but also create a stable water supply. Obviously, locally, conservation efforts are always appreciated as well, and it's a good use of money and resources, but there's no doubt that Southern California needs a stable water supply. And I know, Zada, you were in a meeting with the governor, what, two weeks ago?
Just last Monday, right before the vote took place on Tuesday, and this council approved, with Councilmember Najarian being absent, approved Glendale's positive vote on the water fix. And with 68% Metropolitan Water District approved the 25.9% share of the project.
Right. No, it's important.
And of course, that's assuming all the funding is there. Our share of the funding is not ever going to exceed the 25.9%.
Right. That's very important. One thing I should add, yesterday was sort of an exciting day. The Deputy Prime Minister of Armenia was in San Francisco, and they had reached out to me about two weeks ago to set up a meeting with Governor Brown, where Armenia signed on to the Under 2 Coalition, the greenhouse gas reduction effort that Governor Brown has been spearheading in the wake of the pullout of the Paris Accords. And so Armenia signed on to that agreement yesterday at a ceremony in the governor's office. And so I got to have a ringside seat for that and help facilitate the meeting, and it was quite exciting. The governor was quite excited and talkative and engaged, and he brought up the housing freeze bill right out of the gate, too, which was also kind of cool. So that's good to see California leading the way on climate change and other countries responding positively.
I just want to thank you for being here and for giving us the latest on all of these bills. And a lot of people have, when you were running for election, and you were everywhere in Glendale and around the district, and I have to say that we thank you for that, because now we are seeing the results of the fact that you know the district, you know our community, you know Glendale, and we thank you for all the support and for, of course, securing all the funding that you've been able to do with the different bills that you've been backing. And I just want you to know that we appreciate your forward-thinking, your support of children and education, transportation, all of it. So thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. No, it's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I want to add my accolades to your efforts, both when you were a tweener between the Assembly and the Senate. You were very active, incredibly active. I don't think anyone could keep up with you. You've continued that pace as a senator, which is very heartening. You've got a great field representative, Ms. Chakian. In the rare event that you're not attending a meeting, or a luncheon, or some sort of tête-à-tête, she is there, representing you well. And how can we get in touch with you?
Many ways.
The public. We know how to get you, but...
We are on Broadway. So that's the other exciting thing, is we moved our office from north of the boulevard to Broadway, right next to the Antaeus Theater, so we're right at the corner of Broadway and Maryland. We are working with the city on our holiday open house. We're going to try to close down Maryland and have our holiday open house. I haven't even told any of you that. I spoke to Dan Bell today. We want to close the street and bring in a snow machine and have our holiday open house on Maryland. So we're working with the city. Hopefully, the permits aren't too expensive, because we are a state office, so be nice to us. And we're working with the city to place our signs on the side of the building. Obviously, we want to permit everything properly, but I wanted to be in the heart of the city. And that corner on Broadway and Maryland is the heart of the city, and so we're happy to be there and hope to obviously stay for the next seven years. I'm glad you mentioned Arda Chakian, my field deputy who takes care of Glendale, product of Glendale Schools, went to CV, went to GCC, and then transferred to USC, and was the Provost Award as the number-one transfer in her graduating class at USC. I like to say she's never gotten a B, and I've never gotten an A, so we make a great combination. And so she represents us. Where are you? Are we going to embarrass you anymore? You can stand up, Arda. We're embarrassing her. So give it up for Arda. And that's probably the most fun part of my job, is finding these young diamonds. And I always say that your first job should be with me and not your last job. Move on to something bigger and better, and I know Arda's going to do better things. So it's an honor to represent the community and to call many of you friend and have a relationship where we can talk. But we're on Broadway. Our office number's there. My home number, if anybody wants to call me at home, is 818-952-3432. 818-952-3432. I do believe I am the only legislator of the 120 that has my home telephone number on the state's website. If you want to call me, call me at 10 o'clock at night, because I'm not there, or because I'm out in the community before then. But it rings in my kitchen, so thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Senator. Please keep us posted. You have an open invitation to give us specific briefings on any issues, or alert us to anything that you think we need to know about. Mr. Agajanian?
You said next seven years. Why you said next seven years?
Because hopefully, I serve seven more years.
I thought, there's three terms.
Oh, I only get two, Reg.
Why?
Because of the term limits. The new members get 12. I got six in the Assembly, and I get eight in the Senate.
Oh, I see. Right.
And hopefully, I'll serve all seven of them, and you guys will keep me as proudly on Broadway. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. What's next, Mr. Kosakian?
For his consent items, including minutes, the following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Yes, I would like to move the item.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Let's have roll.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
And Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Next item would be community event announcement, three minutes. I do have three cards.
Do we want to do council and staff comments first?
Let's do...
I'm sorry.
Five would be city council and staff comments.
Okay. Anyone interested? Ms. Devine?
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. I'm wearing pink, because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so please, all of you out there, if you haven't had your mammograms, please do so. It's kind of best idea to schedule every October, and that way you won't forget. But please remember, I want to congratulate staff, Economic Development, on Tech Week. I attended several of the workshops, and they were great. One that I'll probably never forget was the Beat Junkies, which was a company, a firm here in Glendale that teaches DJs how to scratch, so I got to dip my fingers into that kind of fun DJ job. The Job Fair, when I congratulate the Verdugo Job Center, we had a line around the library. It was fantastic, and there were high-paying, good jobs for people that were interested and that attended, so I wanted kudos to Phil and his group at Economic Development. Jennifer's here tonight, McLean, and Darlene Sanchez, Tamar Sad, all of you, brilliant job. Thank you so much. More people, more speakers. It was just fantastic. Senator Portantino mentioned SB 1 and Measure M. I am on the board, the Arroyo Verdugo Steering Committee, which is now a JPA, a joint, geez, I can't think of the... Thank you, JPA Joint Powers Agreement. We represent Burbank, South Pasadena, Pasadena, La Cuenyata, and Glendale, of course. And now, because we are a JPA, we have the LA County representative on the board, and that would be Supervisor Catherine Berger. What this gives us is a little bit more, those of us, well, in all of these cities, but especially, we're interested in Glendale, gives us a little bit more say in how the funding is used on transportation and infrastructure. So it is a very exciting time to be on this JPA. So it is a very exciting time to be on this JPA for our city. Last but not least, I attended Sunday night, the Armenian Church. It is actually the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church of North America, celebrated its 90th anniversary. And they presented a concert dedicated to this celebration, and it was absolutely fantastic. It was held at Glendale High. The auditorium was packed. They had children's choirs from Yervan and from here in our area. But it was beautiful, and I just want to congratulate the Armenian community on a wonderful anniversary. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Sinayan?
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I want to add my comments to Councilmember Devine's regarding the Tech Week. We had a very successful Tech Week last week, and it provided like a glimpse of just how robust the tech sector is in Glendale and how great the potential for its development and strengthening is. And I want to specifically, Phil, Lanza Fain's name was mentioned, Phil, and Jennifer McLean, and Darlene Sanchez, great work. I think we all look at this as a huge improvement over last year. We're happy, but we can do better. So we're always thinking of how much better we're going to do next year. But great lineup of panelists, fun events, great competitions, some robust donors, or what do you call them, the sponsors, who made the Pitch Fest possible. And of all the events that I participated, the Pitch Fest was probably the most interesting, because you dealt with nine individuals or nine companies that presented their tech-related business ideas, hoping to win the prize. And you were talking about Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And incidentally, or coincidentally, the winner of the Pitch Fest was a mammogram machine, which was, at least in concept, a huge improvement over the existing model. And it was just so impressive that despite the fact that the other eight were very impressive as well, you had to go with this machine. But again, a little indication of how serious our Tech Week is being taken by the industry. And people are ready to bring their very significant ideas and present them first at our Tech Week, at our Pitch Fest. So, well done. I look forward to the one next year. Thank you.
Pass by Mr. Agajanian. I will pass, except to, I neglected to explain what I'm doing. I'm Judge Protem, this, not judge, sorry, that's my other job sometimes, Mayor Protem. And our current mayor, Vartan Karpechan, is traveling in Korea on city business this week. Very good. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item would be community event announcements, three minutes, and there's two cards.
Thank you. First speaker is Adrina Ovanessian.
Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dr. Adrina Ovanessian, a local optometrist in the community. And I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Health Festival to make an important announcement. The eighth annual Glendale Health Festival will take place on November 4, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Pacific Edison Community Center. The address is 501 South Pacific Avenue in Glendale, California. This festival is a free event and is open to the entire community, so we encourage all family members to join us. Here are the services we will be providing to all ages, infants, children, adults, and elderly. Free complete health evaluation, complete blood work, free eye examination, consultation, and glaucoma testing. This year, for the first time, we will have recycled prescription eyeglasses for everyone visiting our booth, including kids five years and above and all adults. Our kids' site program will provide eye screenings for kids six months to six years for early detection of eye diseases. Dental exam, referrals for pap smears, mammograms on the site, cancer screenings, medical consultations, mental health education and evaluation, hearing tests, medication consultation, and onsite drug disposal, CPR training, immigration issues, nutrition education, presentations on parenting, immigration, and addictions. Those will be held 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for an hour. Free flu shots for all ages. And last but not least, food and entertainment. You can visit our website at www.glandalehealthfestival.com or amsc.com for more information. Thank you, and hope to see you all on November 4. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doctor, how many years has this health fair been going on?
This is the eighth year that we've been doing it, yes.
It's absolutely fantastic, and I hope that a lot of people in the community take advantage, because the services that you offer are extraordinary.
I really hope so, because this is for the community, and we want everybody to come and participate.
Thank you.
And hope we see you all there, too. Thank you very much.
Can you repeat the date again and the location?
November 4, Saturday, November 4, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay.
Pacific.
The Pacific Auditorium.
No, 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 no. At the Pacific Community Center, 501 North Pacific Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you then.
All right.
And next speaker is Margarita Bagdasarian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Margarita. I work for the ANCA Glendale Chapter. And I'm just here today to announce a blood drive that we will be hosting this coming Sunday. We're partnering up with the American Red Cross, as well as the local chapters of several Armenian-American organizations, including the Armenian Relief Society, Armenian Cultural Foundation, Armenian Youth Association, and the Home and Enterprise Glendale Chapter. And we're hosting a blood drive. You know, there's been a lot of really terrible, from fires to shootings to hurricanes happening in the U.S. this past month, so a lot of hospitals are short of blood supplies. So we want to contribute as much as we can. The blood drive will take place on Sunday, October 22. It's going to be at the Glendale Youth Center, which is located at 211 West Chestnut Street. And it's going to be going on from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. So you guys can just walk in, or you can go on redcrossblood.org and use the sponsor code ANCAGLANDALE to make an appointment. But we would love to just have you walk in and donate blood if you can. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards for this portion of community announcements. Let's go to the next item.
I have four cards for three-minute general public comments.
We do have cards. Do we have blood?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's do this first. Okay, the first speaker is Mr. Ashot Abulian.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to speak to you regarding the rent control measure.
So before the residents found out, landlords took steps against it, and they started...
Instead of raising the rent every year, now that I think that the rent control measure might pass, they started to raise the rent every six months. So our building already had more than 20% increases in recent six months, and six of our neighbors are already ready to move out. One of them moved to Taanga, one of them moved to Los Angeles, one of them moved to Eagle Rock. So my household income is $1,500, and our rent is $1,675, and we're thinking to move out, too. So a lot of people are suffering this, and then every day while going around Glendale, I see a lot of new buildings. And he's asking if, could you please build a 50-unit building for the people who are low-income? I've heard on TV that they're going to have 20,000 Section 8 vouchers, and I've been in Glendale for 15 years. Till now, I never had a chance to apply for Section 8 program. I've heard that in the past 15 years, we still have 250 applicants that didn't get the assistance. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Isabel Meyer.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Isabel Meyer, and I'm a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon. I took some pictures last week, may I pass them along, please, to show you why our neighborhood is extremely frustrated with the amount of trash that is being left behind by people who park on the two-only access roads to our canyon. One is the underpass under the Number 2 freeway, Glen Oaks Boulevard, and the other one is the Holly exit off the 2 freeway. It's a popular place for people to carpool, as well as pick up lunch. Unfortunately, they consistently drop everything right there in our neighborhood. And while we're happy to have people park there, we are not happy with the amount of trash being generated. Now, I've lived in the canyon for 43 years, and I don't believe that in this time there has been a street sweeper ever going past on those two sections of Glen Oaks and Mount Carmel. We're hoping that you will be able to make arrangements for those streets to be periodically cleaned. Several of us old-timers in the canyon have picked up the trash whenever we can. But unfortunately, we're all getting older, and in my case, I had knee surgery. I can't do it anymore. So I think it's just getting completely out of hand, and we would really, really like your help in keeping our neighborhood, that portion of our neighborhood, as clean and nice-looking as we take pride of the rest of the canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian, you saw the pictures, and I think we'll leave it up to your professional judgment as to the best way to solve that problem, whether it's trash cans, or sweeping, or pickup, or whatever. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Next speaker is Kathy Morfolous.
I wanted to express my continued, my support for the continued ban of cannabis in Glendale. You know, I voted for Prop 64, I voted against Prop 64, but I wasn't actually passionate about it. I was just, thought it was common sense that you should vote against that. But these many months later, every one of my volunteer groups that I've worked with for many years has expressed strong opposition to cannabis and the effects. So the literacy groups I work with, women's groups, Boy Scouts, so I wanted to provide the report that was given to me all those months ago and that I followed up on. And every point that was, that I highlighted on here was a surprise to me. So it was a surprise to me that it'd been re-engineered to be many times more powerful. And all of the other points, it's consistent with what is on the governor's, the state of California, they have a report there of the Department of Health and Safety about cannabis. So this is not an unusual report. The name of the report is Marijuana's Impact on California, but it mirrors what is available on the governor's site. So I wanted to explain that a lot of people that I've talked to in my neighborhood and in other groups having to do with Glendale, once they read this report, they said, if they did vote for it, they said, "I would never have voted for it." Or, number two, "If I had known this, I would have been more outspoken." So from the heart, I wanted to express to you why I'm passionate about it now. I've been a real estate loan agent for 30 years. I actually am super knowledgeable about real estate lending. However, during the ramp-up of Wall Street and the unsafe loans and so forth, I would go to those meetings, and I never spoke up, because I felt intimidated. And what do I know? These people are big, they're important, they're rich. They must know something I don't know. But we'd come back to the lending office, and we'd say, "We're not going to do these loans, because common sense tells us that these are a bad deal." However, I feel like I should speak up on this, because even though I'm not an expert, common sense tells us that buyer beware. You know, this is, this is an important issue. It has lots of reasons to have a buyer beware. So I didn't speak up in the past, because I didn't think I was smart enough or important enough. And I hope that I can at least entrust you in looking at these. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The last card I have for this portion is Susan Wolfson.
Good evening, council members and ladies and gentlemen.
...than the average citizen of Glendale. Actually, I believe the average salary for a police officer is about $150,000 a year. And when they retire after 30 years of service, they will be receiving 90% of their last year's salary for their pension for life. Most officers can retire at the age of 50 or 55 with outrageous pension benefits. The average pension for a police officer who retired in the last 10 years is about $200,000 a year. Council members, do you know, you know, excuse me, who do you know has retired with a pension of $200,000 a year for life? Will you have this kind of pension when you choose to retire? Council members, if you do not believe me, I can bring you a list of retirees the next time I come before City Council. Today, we have more police officers receiving pensions than the current number of active police officers. Let the police officer and their subordinates pay for the museum, its staffing, and anything relating to this museum. Since our council members want to stay in the good graces with our police officers, they will probably approve this feel-good museum. However, better to use this money for law enforcement and police protection. Should you approve the money for this museum, I will let my readers of your Glendale Community Newsletter know what you think about this important, how important it is to pay for this feel-good museum than taking care of the struggling residents of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. The first, the first question I'd like to ask is just for clarification on the budget and what the scope of the proposed museum is. Is it, when I was reading this, I understood we were going to get up to 180 from the foundation, which has done a great job in fundraising. They're almost at that mark, and that there was going to be just another 100 kicked in for a total budget of 280. But I'm hearing that it's 380 at this point. So can you clarify that? As well as, can you just go through the scope of, the scope of what, I mean, it looks like there's some display cases and some...
How the money's going to be spent.
Yeah, yeah. What's the scope of the work, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem, let me answer your first question. That's what I leaned over and I asked the city attorney. The cost of the installation of this museum will be $280,000. Not to exceed $260,000 for the construction contract and another $20,000 in contingency. Apparently, there was a, it's a technicality with the finance department that we have to transfer the $100,000 a couple of times into two accounts. That comes up to 380. But in essence, we only need $280,000.
I think, and my recollection from finance was that they just needed to be able to have the authority to make the transfer back once, if we get additional funds from the police foundation. So it is a $280,000 project.
Why don't, so I'm sorry, why don't we wait for that issue to be cleared with the additional funds instead of doing this?
And we can.
I don't understand why.
We absolutely can, Mayor Protem Nadarian and members of the City Council. This was to allow us not to have to come back to City Council so that they can go ahead and transfer the money back once the monies were received from the foundation. But absolutely, it's not a problem to do it in two parts, to appropriate the $280,000 tonight, and if necessary, come back to City Council to move the $100,000 from the police department back into the accounts that are necessary. So that would not be a problem.
Well, I'm confused again. So if you appropriate, let's say, assuming we appropriate 280 tonight, then the additional 180 would be a non-issue?
Right. It's from the foundation. So that money will be coming in. The $155,000 is already raised, coming in from the foundation. The foundation is hoping for another $25,000 that's coming in, that they believe it will be coming in fairly quickly. So that money will also be appropriated into this account. And $100,000 would be appropriated from the police department funds, basically from their M&amp;O funds that they haven't spent, into this account, which is a capital improvement project fund, so that then Public Works can make those expenditures within that fund. And at that point, we're at the $280,000. The $380,000 was, again, it's all based on accounting mechanisms without, within the accounting department. I wish finance was here to be able to answer those mechanical questions, but it's not...
Essentially, if different funds, additional funds come in, they don't, the finance department
doesn't have the authority to transfer funds back to the general fund in addition to what's been expended. That's why it's just an additional appropriation, so they have that authority. But as Ms. Beer says...
We can come back.
If we can come back to the second part of it. It's basically, at that point, whatever comes in after today, we'll just come back and ask for reappropriation back to the general fund.
So this is in case the foundation raises more money than the $180,000, which is very possible, they said?
So I guess my question is, why don't we wait for the foundation to raise the $25,000? We have a clear picture. We don't have to this back and forth, and then we'll revisit this issue. We'll look at the merits of this issue. Because otherwise, I mean, these are already large amounts of money and, you know, no doubt, we all appreciate our police department and everything, but I'm, it's just too much confusion and we should be concentrating on how the money's going to be spent as opposed to what money goes forward and back.
It makes it an easier decision.
Sure.
Certainly in light of the speaker's comments, and they're all fiscal prudence, if we see that money in from the foundation fundraising efforts and we realize exactly what's required. Ms. Devine?
I have another question. You said that this started as a $125,000 project. And now, all of a sudden, it's almost $300,000. You also mentioned that you added additions to the design. Who is "we" added? And why were those added? And why don't we just, why don't they just do a design that is $125,000 or $180,000? I mean, you know, going $100,000 over budget just seems to me like a lot of money. This is going to be in the police station. I don't know how many of the public, our residents are going to be in there looking at this. We had an issue this afternoon where Mr. Agajani and councilmember said, "Well, you know, we're not going to get as many residents that are going to be appreciating this or using this." And so this is a lot of, a lot of money. Is there any way that this can, that the project can be downsized or changed so that it isn't that expensive?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Councilwoman Devine, the $125,000 amount was not an engineer's estimate. It was a guesstimate at best, and that was essentially the budget. After we finalized the construction documents and the plans, we took them through the plan check process. There were obviously some comments, and we had to make some adjustment. Subsequent to that, the foundation, and I could ask the police chief to add to it, had decided that they will be able to raise the funds more than what they had initially anticipated. So they, it was their desire to add these elements that I had mentioned. So that, coupled with the very tough construction market currently we're in, that we're getting very few bids, and they're usually coming higher than we had expected or anticipated. That's the reason for going over the budget.
Can we make a contingency on this $100,000 that, that they, the police foundation will repay that, continue raising funds, and reimburse the city that $100,000? Let's say in a year, give them a year?
I will have to defer that.
We'd have to defer that to the, to the police foundation and see if they'd be willing to do that. You know, just to kind of put some perspective on, on a partnership that the city has with the police foundation and the work that they've done in this case in raising very difficult monies in a difficult time when everybody's trying to raise money, and they've done a fantastic job. And they're hoping to go from the $155,000 ultimately to $180,000. And I'm sure as monies do come in, they would, they would pay the city that money for this museum. But to put that contingency in, I'm not sure if they would be able to raise another $100,000 to be able to, you know, make the budget of this museum. And the other part of it is, initially from, from the conversations regarding the scope, that was really, that came from the foundation initially, hoping that that's what the cost would be, not understanding kind of the public process that we have to go through as well as it relates to these contracts, and doing it right from the get-go and having a museum in place that is going to be significant for this police department that's been around for, for many, many years, and to really highlight what this department has been through and what it stands for. And so we're here today to see if council is willing to make the appropriation of that $100,000.
And to answer your question regarding reducing the cost, can we eliminate some elements of the design? Yes, we can. We'll have to work that out with the foundation.
Why? We don't hear from the police chief and the foundation secretary is here, I guess, so they can shed some lights on this.
No problem.
Shed some light on this for us. You've heard some of our comments.
I will try. But with me is Robert Parsigian representing the police foundation, and Officer Teal Metz, who's wearing a 1947 Glendale police uniform, and he is our historian, and this is actually his brainchild. He was, been given the job of curator, so he has all the different historical items that are currently sitting in a closet in the police department. So they may also be able to bring some perspective. In actuality, we, the foundation has raised almost $250,000. But they've already expended and put aside money for a donor wall. That's separate than the construction, but a wall that's going to be able to represent all the different donors who have donated to this project. So they've committed $25,000 to that. They paid the $20,000 for the architectural fees already. They have also ordered a mock helicopter, of the helicopter that we fly in our city. So that's an additional element, all besides, that's all aside from the construction costs. They've raised an additional $30,000 in the last week, and money is continually coming in. The $100,000 is savings that I believe we will have, or I know we will have, in the police department, and it's just so that we can get the project started. As they continue to fundraise, their intention is, yeah, we can pay down any general fund monies that are used. But if we were to tell them, wait until you raise it all, the problem we have is a lot of big donors have provided money over a year ago, and they're kind of getting antsy with us to saying, if you're not going to start the project, we want the money back because there's a lot of other worthy causes that are, could use the money today. And so that's the pressure we're feeling is from the donors themselves, and the foundation is continually going out and raising money. And this is just a way that we can get the project started now. We'll continually fundraise towards this. If we waited and told them, you know, you've got to come up with that extra money yourselves, they would stop funding our K-9 program, they would, we have to close our community academy, our teen academy, all the different things, the STAR program that they contribute to each and every year. And the project did, it got large. The actual scope of the project really hasn't changed. The elements really haven't changed. It's just that the original estimates for the costs were done on a general market. When you go into a city project, we have a lot of different processes, ordinances, expenses, that they wouldn't normally have to pay if they were doing a project out on the open market at their own private business. So because it's a city project, it drives that cost up probably 20%, just because of the different processes we have in order to ensure that projects we build in the city are fair, we give competitive wages. And we're also having to deal now with a building that's 14 years old, but that all the new elements that have to come in have to meet all the new standards. So when you look at the projects, I mean, $60,000 just for lighting to be able to meet the current standards for lighting and all the things that have changed over the years in construction costs. So we're trying to build something new in a building that was built and designed, you know, 15, 16 years ago, and now bring it up, this portion of it has to meet the current standards of today.
Okay.
What? This police foundation is a nonprofit entity. Why they can't get contractor and do the job? Is there any reason that city is getting involved?
Yes, because they're building it in a city facility, because that's what they wanted to do, but we can't, we can't allow that to happen. So they have to meet all the standards of a city project, which we all know, a city project is more expensive.
It's our building, and it's our, we have to be the ones to build it and make the changes to our, to our own facilities.
In terms of ongoing maintenance, and there's, there's going to be no cost for that. Any curator things are going on, it's all going to be done voluntarily by not only members of the department, members of the foundation, and also, we have a lot of retirees and volunteers that are willing to come and help to maintain this project as it's being built and done. This was originally designed into the construction of the police department, but with the project overruns that we had with the building many years ago, this was an element that was eliminated.
I still have two questions. One is still, I'm telling you, I am confused with this accounting, that I thought this project, as has been presented to us, the staff, staff provided us like, something like $280,000, and now there is an amendment or it says resolution of the council, of the city council, and all of a sudden became 380,000. I think we have to clarify that before we decide anything. So that's what bothers me, not the $280,000. The second thing, Glendale Police Foundation members are well-respected people of this community, and they're all intelligent and willing to help, and I think they would...
Aren't you on the foundation? Ah, you are, there you go.
He's praising himself.
That's okay, but there, beside me, there are 35 people. They are intelligent and they are well-respected, not me. So, so what I'm trying to say, by giving them more time, they will raise the money, and that I know that chief will testify to that, right?
We believe we can raise additional funding. The problem we have is pressure from some of the major donors saying, if we don't start the project, they're requesting the money back.
Chief, who are these? I mean, who are these? I'd like to know, who are these people? Because maybe we can contact them and dissuade them from being so, I don't know, so critical or time-sensitive.
I wouldn't want to name them publicly, because these are people that give to all kinds of different projects. And, but I can understand, they're a little bit impatient about this. All, we're believed we have, we're very close to what we need to do this. We're doing additional fundraising. The money we're asking for is money that's already budgeted in the police department. We're not asking for any additional funds from the city. It's money that we have in our police department that we're willing to save in other areas so that we could use towards part of this project if we need to fill the gap until we get the foundation up to where we need to be. And unfortunately, the project, you know, came in a lot more, and we're going to be negotiating.
Chief, are you talking about the $25,000 or are you talking about the $100,000?
Well, the $100,000 is the contingency. We don't believe we're going to need all of that money, but we need to have it on hand or at least appropriated.
But that's in addition to the 100, right? The 100 contingency that you're referring to is in addition to the initial 100,000.
No. All I'm asking for is 100, I'm asking for permission to take $100,000 that's in the police department budget today, that's going to be used for M&amp;O projects, and move it into a capital fund project.
How about the general fund?
So putting aside Mayor Protem Nadarian and members of the city council, and I apologize for my voice, I lost it this, this weekend at Disneyland. Putting aside the amendment that you have before you in terms of the resolution and going back to the original staff report, again, the foundation has raised $155,000, and they believe that another $25,000 is imminent, and it's coming within the next week or two. So what we're asking is to accept those monies from the foundation of $180,000 and appropriate it into the CIP account, as well as allow the police chief to transfer $100,000 that's already been allocated within his, his budget, because he believes he's going to have those savings at the end of the fiscal year, and transfer that from the general fund within the police department budget into the CIP account, as I'm looking at Rubik, for a total of $280,000. And the foundation, if, if more monies do come in and they do raise more funds, we would come back to City Council at that time and ask for an appropriation from the foundation into the CIP account to be able to pay back a portion of the $100,000. So tonight, we're asking you to dispense with competitive bidding and to allow us to make these transfers and to allow the Public Works Director to negotiate with, with the contractors, the vendors that are available, up to $280,000 and not to exceed that amount.
And it would not be to sign any contract. It would be, this action would be just to make the appropriation and the proper funds. You're going to go and negotiate with the contractor. At such point, will it come back to us, or it'll be already approved on a...
It would be approved at that point to move forward if you give us that allowance this evening.
Okay. So what would council like to do at this point?
So let me, can I, can I see if, if you don't mind? So first of all, I want to commend the foundation, Robert, Officer Metz, on great undertaking. You're doing a fantastic job raising funds. We were just at a fundraiser the week before last, and obviously, you've done many others. You've come up with a significant amount of money. That's very commendable. Good job. Also, chief, I commend you on being able to come up with $100,000 in savings in the, in the monies that have already been allocated to the police department. But with all due respect, that $100,000 would otherwise revert back to the general fund, right? If these are savings, it would go to the general fund, and it would be used for our city's purposes probably next year. I assume it would roll over. So it's a saving, it's a good thing, but it's a saving to the city. And it's, I mean, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of saying, you know, we can, give us money, we'll save $100,000, and we'll use it for a purpose other than salaries or pensions, which are paramount, in my mind, for our police officers, and I think in the minds of our, of my colleagues, too. So I've been a staunch supporter of the police department. I've always supported all these, again, the life, quality of life, safety issues. But the museum is fundamentally a luxury. I mean, it's a, it's a thing that's good for the city, it's good for the department, but it's not something that we can't live without. What I'm saying is, it's not something that you have to, have to allocate. So when I look at $100,000, basically, allocation towards a museum catches my attention. So I'm very, you know, concerned about this. I'm a little uneasy, because I believe in the foundation, I think they can raise this money. And, you know, I mean, really, tell me who these people are who are saying they're going to take back their money, and I'd love to go one by one, knock on their door, have a personal conversation, and plead with them and ask them not to do such a thing.
But I want to be clear, that $100,000 is not going to be, I'm just going to defer what I would, I'll spend it on what it was originally allocated for. We'll, we were going to defer the purchase of certain things, new desks and chairs and different things in the building that we were going to, that were approved in the budget. So if we don't spend it here, we'll spend it on the originally intended items.
Let me go to Mr. Agajanian.
I want to suggest that we approve the $280,000 for this project, to limit it to $280,000 on a condition that, to transfer $100,000 from Police Operation Patrol Program to this project on a condition that foundation, next, let's say, two years, will collect more money to pay the police department, back to police department during the next two years, to reimburse the police department for that extra $100,000 that we allocate now or give the permission to transfer from General Fund of Police Operation Patrol Program to be returned to the, to that fund again.
So let me just understand that, that you would be in support of the appropriations, but with a direction to the, to the police fund to continue their fundraising efforts for the police department. And I think, I think that's their unending commitment to the police department, anyway. They're always fundraising. And at that point, the idea is, if I understand, that in the end, it's going to actually be a museum that is funded entirely by the, the police foundation.
Yes.
I mean, this should be, this should be a feel-good thing that we're doing here. We're getting a nice museum in the police department. We've got a volunteer curator, we've got the community involved pitching in, you know, we're a law and order city, one of the safest cities we like to brag about. But we're also, this discussion, chief, is reflecting our fiscal conservatism. So please understand that. We're not trying to rain on your parade, but we want to make sure that, that our residents don't get the misunderstanding that we're throwing money out the window. So personally, I like that idea, Mr. Agajanian. I think it puts us in the right... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine. So do you understand where we're going? Is that consistent with the, with the action before us?
You'll need to move the items with that, that condition, and we will make the necessary changes to, to the operating documents here.
Basically, tasking, right, and tasking the police foundation to keep at it.
Condition that police foundation continues efforts to raise monies to make up that, make up that gap.
And raise their money first.
I have a...
Thank you, Mr. Mohol. You had a great three minutes, and it's our turn now. Ms. Devine?
Yes. Chief, I think we're all getting emails about this, saying that this $100,000 could go to another police officer. Is it my understanding from what you've been saying that this money would not be spent on a police officer, a position? It would be spent on desks and...
It would be spent on, yeah, new desks, new chairs, lockers, different things that we were already budgeted to buy in the department with this money. And those employees, because the police officers themselves and their families have been giving money for this project, because they've wanted this for many years. So a lot of money has come in from them, and a lot more are willing to even give more money as, you know, they get towards the end of the year, so that we know that we're going to be able to continue. We have other organizations that want to help us continue to fundraise, but we are getting a lot of pressure to at least begin the project with the funds that we have been entrusted with for a long time. They're actually all, are given to the police foundation. And so there's a good chance we may not even need to spend that entire $100,000 that we're asking for. Our hope is that we're going to be able to negotiate a better deal. If we cannot negotiate down to a reasonable price, then we're not going to even, we're going to ask to go out and do a whole new RFP again. And maybe then we look at, you know, what else can we, we change and do?
Well, I just want to make it clear, because I was a member of the police foundation, and I know what they do, and I know how valuable they are to, to the police force, to our city. And I think this was a, you know, a great idea. However, you know, I just was shocked, in the beginning, I was, you know, I was asked about, you know, would council contribute to this? And I said, what are we talking about? And it was like $10,000. And I said, absolutely, that, that is reasonable, and it's, but, so when I saw, you know, 100, that this is going to cost almost $300,000, I was kind of blown away. And, and just as the mayor says, you know, I am looking at this in a fiscal conservative way. I mean, I want to make sure that, that the money is spent as best it can be, and knowing that I'm not taking a police officer away, I'm not taking a dog away, I'm not, you know, I'm not doing any of those things. It, it seems a little bit more reasonable and palatable to me. Also, I would like, you know, I'm glad that there, the foundation is considering and promising to continue raising funds so that the police department isn't on the hook for, for the whole amount. So, thank you.
If they're going to vote, I got to say my piece.
Okay. It looks like, like we're on the verge of a motion. Mr. Sinan?
Yeah. So, chief, again, the $100,000, I understand that it's not, so now it's not really a saving, it's, we're giving up buying desks and lockers, and instead, we're going to move this money towards the museum, which I don't think is a prudent way to spend the money. I'm sorry, if we need desks and lockers for our police officers, that should be a priority. And what's going to happen is, we're going to defer this purchase towards next year. So we're going to allocate another $100,000 towards the purchase of desks and lockers that we've already allocated this year. I just, I don't understand that. Again, I'm all for serving the purposes of this city and its residents. I'm not just going to look at it fiscally, I'm going to vote fiscally on this issue. So $100,000, to the extent we could save, should be used towards traffic safety or equipment for our police officers, making them safer, making them better equipped to do their jobs, training. If we can, if we need to hire more people, hire more people. But this, again, is a luxury. Again, I'm sort of just taken aback by that amount, the $100,000. And I understand the explanation is, well, we sort of underestimated the cost. Well, okay, but how is that the city's budgetary issue? That's the foundation's issue. Again, I have total confidence in the, in the foundation's ability to raise funds. I have to look out for the, the interests of the police officers and the police department, which appears to be, according to the way we approved the budget, desks and lockers, and that's what the money should be spent on.
And that's what the money should be spent on. And this we can all together, come together and raise money for, or maybe scale it back so that it's manageable and we can actually afford the museum that we can afford.
But I want to be clear, those, the original estimates were not done by the police foundation. They were done by city staff.
Well, shame on city staff. I mean, what do you want me to say?
Well, no, costs have gone up.
Right. I recognize that. And with all due respect, I'm going to, I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote.
Mr. Agajanian.
I would like to still bring a motion to transfer $100,000 from General Fund of Police Operation Patrol Program and start this museum project with the limitation of up to $280,000 and Glendale Police Foundation to continue fundraising and pay back the police department for the $100,000 which they are allocating to this project. That's my motion, if it's clear, I hope.
So, so it's essentially the, the issue before us with the 280, with the tasking of the police foundation to continue fundraising efforts in an effort to defray the ultimate payment when, when such time.
To make the police department whole.
Ms. Devine.
Well, I'd just like to see it somehow redesigned some way that it's not this expensive. You know, I keep looking at this statement, we added new, new additions. And maybe if we didn't add those new additions, we could still have a very nice museum there and not be as costly.
Okay, so we're talking about cost savings then in the ultimate design and negotiation, which I fully support. And I would, how much can you say about that, except that you would continue those efforts, look for cost savings, and bring us the most cost-efficient museum as possible, regardless of our approval? I mean, even if we were to approve this, we're not going to say, well, here's your budget, don't try to, to make the best deal possible.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, Mayor City Council, the, one of the recommended actions is actually to authorize the city manager to execute the contract once we have finalized the negotiations.
Okay. So, that's what we're talking about.
So, if you prefer for us to bring it back, that's just an added step, we can definitely do that. But if you would, like Ms. Beer mentioned, reject the bids and allow me to directly negotiate with the bidders, we will work with the foundation, with the police department, see if we can scale back some of the elements, and we have a better handle during the negotiations to reduce some of the cost, line item cost that the contractor has proposed.
I want to add to that, that with the contingency to be 280,000, maximum of 2,080, $280,000, it's already there.
That is the recommended action, Councilmember Agajanian.
So, the process that you just described is included in our action currently?
Do you want the item to come back? Because as it's, as it's proposed now, it would, you're giving direction to the city manager and Director of Public Works to negotiate the best deal they can under the 200, actually under 260 with a, with a contingency. If you're okay with that, then, then they can go do that. Otherwise, if you wanted to come back at that point...
And, and would that be with the changes or with the tweaking of the, the design so that, you know, you could negotiate down?
Yeah, Councilmember Devine, we will, if that's your desire for us to bring it back, they will be scaled back. If not scaled back, definitely a price negotiated lower than what we have received as a bid.
And I'll be happy to vote on this when that happens, but not before.
Well, let's see. So, what, what is your motion, to accept that process with your 280 maximum cap?
Maximum, with the contingency.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
What, you want, let's see, there's a...
No, this is, this is a one-shot deal with the understanding that they're going to negotiate, possibly reduce, to make cost reductions that are appropriate.
But you're approving the 280 now.
The 280 is approved now. And that's your motion?
Right.
Is there a second to that motion?
Do we have to approve the amount tonight? Can we just approve that you...
If they can't do it, they come back.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, Mayor City Council, you don't have to approve the amount tonight. What we would definitely need is authorization, I'm sorry, to reject both bids and authorize me to negotiate the contract, scope, and the bid amount, and if it's your desire to bring it back with the final negotiated amount.
I'll make that my substitute motion.
Yes, I would do that. I would go for that.
So, that's a second.
To bring it back.
Yeah.
After they, he reduced it.
You don't think we're micromanaging?
You have to give some limit to, to what they are negotiating. So, we have to say the maximum of 280,000 with contingency that they can go and negotiate. You have to give some figures, like everybody else, like everything else we are doing. We send our, you know, attorneys to settle something, we say up to this amount.
All right. So, so, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, Mayor City Council, if you authorize a limit, then we'll obviously work against that ceiling with the caveat that it will have to come back ultimately for your approval.
Do you need that limit? Do you need that for your negotiation or you don't?
Preferably, yes. It doesn't have to be $280,000. It could be any amount.
There you go.
Okay, so, we have a substitute motion. We have a second on that? Did you second that, Ms. Devine? No, no, the substitute motion.
Yes, yes, yes.
To do everything but to come back before the, the final decision is, is, before the money is put in or before...
Before the money is approved, yeah.
With what they're negotiating on.
Negotiating on the contract.
There has to be some limit to negotiation. They have to know that what they're negotiating.
Well, just to point out, if you're, if you're giving direction to come back, then we really don't need a cap at the end of the day. It would be nice, but it'd be nice.
Exactly. If it comes back at $800,000, we'll vote against it. If it comes back at lower than 260, I think we'll consider it seriously.
Based on council's interest tonight and your opinions on, on this matter, I think we have pretty clear direction as it relates to going back and negotiating with the vendors and bringing it back somewhere below the dollar amounts that we've been talking about, which means scaling back on the museum as well. So, it'll take some time for us to meet with the foundation and, and come up with what that is going to look like and what that scope is. And we'll come back to you with, with a dollar amount and see if council's comfortable with that at that time. And we'll appropriate the money at that time as well. That does not have to happen this evening.
Great. So, I have a motion and a second to that effect.
Okay. Roll call. Is that clear, by the way, as to what we're doing?
Councilmembers...
What's the motion?
Okay.
So, the motion?
It's to come back. It's to come back, do the negotiations, come back with a firm price, with cost savings.
Okay, why we are, we are doing that. And so, they negotiate.
So, right.
And if they come back and doing whatever is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, so Director of Public Works needs the council to dispense with competitive bidding so that he can negotiate. So, we need to do that. He also needs you to accept the funds from the police foundation. We do not need the appropriation tonight and we do not need you to approve the, the amount of the contract. So, those are the two items. Dispense of competitive bidding, authorizing the public works director to negotiate.
And get, get the foundation, right?
Accept, accept the foundation funds.
That's my motion, that's the second.
I'll second.
And we'll do part two at a future date.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian? Mayor Pro Tem Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decisions. City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
First speaker is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Paul Devine, last week I asked Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Najarian, for about five seconds longer to complete my speech, and you became hysterical, asking Mr. Najarian to stop me. Mr. Najarian, since you did not indicate differently, you actually confirmed what I said that evening, that Assistant City Manager Yasmin Beers had the inside track for our next city manager. She was being supported by you, Mrs. Devine, and Mr. Garpadian. In 2012, Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers laid off about 25% of the city workforce. At that time, our unfunded pension liability was about $1.2 billion, and today with fewer employees, our unfunded liabilities have grown to almost $2 billion. Because of you, Mrs. Paul Devine, you and your colleagues used that 25% reduction in workforce to give our current city employees outrageous pay raises every year, year after year. Councilman Devine, you said what I was saying was not true, and where did I get my information? Oh, yes, the most incriminating statement you made the other night showed your total lack of comparison, compassion, comparison, and understanding for working families. In 2015, Mr. Ochoa blackmailed you and the rest of the council, saying he was offered a better job with the city of Riverside. Mrs. Devine, you could have shown real leadership by just saying no to this blackmail, but instead you went along with your colleagues and approved an outrageous $43,000 a year pay raise. For Mr. Ochoa, Glendale was just a stopover for better opportunities. While our city labor force was being reduced, Mr. Ochoa was being, also bringing about 10 of his friends to Glendale from Monrovia, who at the time were earning annually about $70,000. Today, Mr. Ochoa's friends are earning a staggering $150,000 to $200,000 yearly. Last week, we also learned about Mr. Ochoa's friend Darlene Sanchez, who he also brought to Glendale three years ago. She received three pay raises and today she's earning a whopping annual salary of about $200,000 plus retirement pension benefits. Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers have only bounced the budget into the black year after year by raising fees, water, and electric rates every, every year. Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers have never, never bounced the budget into the black without first gouging the residents. Mrs. Devine, for six years, Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers had been pulling the wool over your eyes, the council and struggling families of Glendale. With the help of Mrs. Beers, Mr. Ochoa is leaving the city more in the red than when he arrived six years ago. For Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers, as countless employees, it's not about being public servants, but all about being public gougers with no remorse. Mr. Ochoa and Mrs. Beers are two peas in the same pod. Mrs. Devine, you said you were going to institute pension reform. Why would you want to change the system from which you and your husband both benefit? Yes, according to Transparent California, your combined government retirement pension benefits are nearly $200,000 annually. Mrs. Devine, I understand you and your husband are jet setters, each buying tickets for $75,000 to take a vacation on a private jet. Mrs. Devine, with your family envious government retirement pension monies, how are you able to relate to struggling families? Council members, Mr. Najarian, the number one problem facing our city is the pension crisis. Mrs. Beers has a husband also who works for the government, a government employee. Therefore, how can we expect a leader to advocate for serious pension reform when that person has a conflict of interest? Council members, we do not need a city insider with a conflict of interest to be our next city manager. We need to interview people from the outside with impeccable, impeccable credentials. Thank you.
Next speaker is Karen Quoc.
Hi, I'm Karen Quoc, and I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but as I was sitting here, my friends know that I'm here every week anyway, trying to learn as much as I can about our city, so they asked me to convey some of their concerns. Okay, here last night in this chamber, the Glendale Water and Power Commissioners held a meeting about their plan, their $500 million plan to expand the Grayson Gas Plant. And this meeting was packed with people, that it was, the room was overflowing, there were people standing in the back with their small children. And unfortunately, the meeting was very long. It started at 6:00 and it ended at 9:40. So, unfortunately, many of our, my fellow members of the Glendale Environmental Coalition weren't able to make their comments because they had small children who needed to be put to bed. And so, they asked me to convey their concerns that they were upset that they did not have the opportunity to speak. And although, I would like to thank Councilmember Devine for, for listening to our concerns, but I would also like to ask the other council members and staff that if you have not had the opportunity to do so, we would kindly encourage you to listen to us and also that there would be another opportunity for a public comment. And this is actually meant for my, my fellow Glendale residents as well as to, to city council members and staff, that there'll be another meeting on Thursday and we would also appreciate it if you could listen to our comments then, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. I know we have, yes.
I can just make a comment, Mr. Mayor, rather quickly if it's okay with you. The only thing I will say about the comments of Mr. Mohill as he, as he walks out of these chambers is that as an immigrant who came to this country in 1979, I hold very dearly the First Amendment and, and the right for folks to, to have the opportunity to speak their mind. The only thing that I would ask is that if there are comments that are directed at any one of us, and in this case, me, to leave our family members out of the comments, that's the only thing that I would ask. And the only clarification that I'll make is that my husband does not work for a government agency. He never has. And he works for a private company and he always has. And so, that's just a point of clarification, not that that is anyone's business, but I'll just make that statement once and I'll ask again for folks like Mr. Mohill to keep their comments directed at us specifically and to the council as it relates to the business of this council. I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and, and members of the city council.
Thank you. We have new business?
Yes, we do. If I may? Yes, thank you, Mr. Najarian. So, I move that the city attorney, B. Inherby, is authorized to enter into an executive legal services agreement with Brownstein Hyatt Farborough Shrek LLP for their representation of the city of Glendale in the Los Angeles Water Keepers petition for writ of mandate against California State Water Resources Control Board and Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board's adoption and grant of NPDES permits for discharges from four recycled water treatment plants, case number B, as in boy, S as in Sam, 171009, BS 171010, BS 171011, and BS 171012. The legal services agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of the written man, writ petitions. The city attorney is further authorized to execute a waiver of conflict of interest for Brownstein's joint representation of the cities of Glendale and Burbank in the writ petitions. The city attorney is further authorized to execute a joint defense agreement on behalf of the city with the city of Burbank, as well as with the state water board and regional board for the coordination and sharing of confidential information in the writ petitions litigation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes.
No more new business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Seconded.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.